Now, you guys ready? Who are we missing? Are we missing anybody? No?
This is Mr. Hatton.
Oh, okay. All right, I'm gonna go ahead and start. I'd like to call the order of the New Kent County Planning Commission Regular Meeting, um, July twentieth, twenty twenty. I'd like to have a moment of silence. If we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
My pledge is to the plan of the United States of America, to be the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Sherri, can you take role?
Yes, um, Ms. Townsend?
Here.
Ms. Rose?
Here.
Ms. Butler?
Here.
Ms. Pearson?
Here.
Ms. Thomas?
Here.
Mr. LaRochelle?
Here.
Dr. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Bennett?
Here.
Mr. Davis?
Here.
Mr. Tiller?
Here.
Mr. Moyer?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sherri. Has everybody had a chance to review the minutes from the April twentieth meeting? I have a few changes, just small things, if it, unless anybody else has any before me. Um, okay. So, page three at the bottom. Um, it says, "She reminded the commissioners the county would see an increase in revenue by granting the request instead of grading." And then it says, "She also noted significant roof and structural repair was needed to her home," and she, instead of C, referred to the commissioners. The s- the page four, one, two, three, four, the fifth paragraph down. Um, "Two lots created from the parent lot through this rezoning instead of though." Does anybody have anything else?
Madam Chair, I think I have one more.
Okay.
On page three, the second paragraph under Public Hearings, the fifth line down, land use designation, and it goes on, I think the word should be extensive, not extension, designation, extensive designation.
Extensive? Okay. Anything else? Can I get a motion to?
Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as presented with the corrections.
Thank you. Ms. Townsend?
Somebody second? Or do we have to put the second? Okay.
Sherri, can you call role?
Certainly, with the corrections noted to the April twentieth, twenty, twenty minutes. How say you, Mr. LaRochelle?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Tiller? Ms. Rose?
Aye.
Ms. Butler?
Aye.
Ms. Thomas?
Aye.
Ms. Townsend?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Dr. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to the Citizens' Comment Period. Um, just reminder that comments are limited to those on planning-related issues that are not scheduled for a public hearing later on the agenda. Um, if you haven't already done so, please sign up on the sheet in the lobby prior to the meeting.
No one's signed up yet.
No one's on there, okay? Thanks, Kelly? Do we have any presentations?
No man.
Okay.
No presentations.
Okay. Um, any unfinished business?
Not from staff.
I don't recall any either.
No.
Okay. All right, we'll move on to the public hearings. Uh, the first one we have is Application CUP zero one dash two zero Pocahontas Center Retail and Mini Storage. Do we have a? Pre- yes, we do have a presentation. Is there a presentation beforehand, or have heard me that first?
No, I know we haven't done this for a while. Yeah, she'll give the.
I know, right? I haven't.
No, I think first we turn it over to Katie to explain the procedure for the public hearing.
Hit it, Katie.
And don't forget to put, don't forget to hit your mic. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Tonight we have two public hearings before us. Each has been properly advertised for tonight's consideration. Let me take a moment to review the procedures that we will use for tonight's hearing. Each public hearing will be considered separately. Staff will give a brief overview of the hearing that is before us. The sponsor of the case will be given an opportunity to make a presentation. Commissioners will be given an opportunity to ask questions of the sponsors or staff for clarification purposes. I will then open the Citizens' Comment portion of the public hearing and receive your comments. The sign-up sheets are located on the desk by the front doors. And I ask the following, that when you come to, you come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Address your comments to the commission. Limit your comments to three minutes. And when the timer sounds, please conclude your remarks. Please note that the commission members will not answer your questions during the Citizens' Comment Period, but will certainly take those questions and comments into consideration during the deliberation period of the public hearing. So at this time, I will open the public hearing for Application CUP dash zero one dash two zero Pocahontas Center Retail and Mini Storage.
Okay.
Kelly?
Thank you, ma'am. I'm gonna give a brief presentation and then invite the applicant up to speak. Kenny wants to put up the slide, please. Mr. Mark Daniel has requested a conditional use permit to construct a retail establishment greater than thirty thousand square feet and a mini storage warehouse on a portion of property located on Pocahontas Trail and Bottoms Bridge. The parcel is located between the VCU Emergency Center and Saint Elizabeth Ann Seaton Catholic Church. The applicant proposes to develop approximately eight to ten acres of the fifty-acre property with a retail center, including shopping, possible grocery, retail, and restaurant along the front of the property with a mini storage facility behind the retail area. Preliminary layout plans show six mini storage buildings as well as an office for the storage use. Layout and conceptual plans for the retail area are included in your packet. The subject property is zoned business and is surrounded by a similarly zoned property, several other businesses, and the Patriots Landing community across Route sixty to the north. The application was reviewed by all county reviewing agencies as well as VDOT. There were some comments that will need to be addressed, especially regarding access to the site should the use permit be granted and the project move to the site plan stage. The zoning ordinance lists specific performance standards for mini storage facilities, which will apply to this project. The property is also located in the Bottoms Bridge Overlay District. The standards review of condition, the standards for review of conditional use permits are set forth in Section ninety-eight dash seven forty-four of the county code and are listed in your staff memo. There are ten suggested conditions listed in Resolution PC dash zero four dash twenty. These conditions will assist in addressing, protecting, and promoting health, safety, and the general welfare of New Kent County citizens. Staff recommends approval of the conditional use permit with these conditions. Now I'll invite Mr. Daniel up to speak. And I'll be here to answer any questions.
Madam Chairman, ladies and gentlemen, the Planning Commission, citizens of New Kent. My name is Mark Daniel, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. You'll notice in these presentations that there's, there's no branding shown on the buildings. And I'll have to tell you, if any of you know anything about me, you should know that I'm a visionary and I'm a dreamer. I like to dream big things and I like to see beautiful things. I've been in New Kent all of my life, a lot of things that you see along the corridors now and Route sixty and different parts of the county, I've had my, I've been involved with. I've been involved, uh, the Bottoms Bridge Overlay District when it was conceived. A great deal of time, money, and effort's been spent by the county to encourage, um, the development of that corridor. And so, for me, I came up with this idea, if I'm going to build something there, what would, what would it like, what would I like it to, to look like? These are pictures of the Brandy Creek Commons, um, uh, development in Mechanicsville, and I just love it. I'm gonna tell you why I love it. If you go today, and I'm not trying to take anything away from the, the facilities we have today, but all the parking is at a right angle, and I've got a truck, I can never get it in, can never get it fit. Uh, the people who designed this, the Timmins Group, um, you'll notice all the parking is like in an angle, it's really cool, you can get in, you can get out. They've got a, a major shop, and then they've got smaller shops next to it. And, um, and I envision the same thing. They've got parking in front of the individual units, um, for handicap, um, and for elderly people. That's a great concept, I think they all should be built that way. The, um, the aesthetics of it is gorgeous. And, um, I, I can't tell you right now that, that, that I did, built it, but I can tell you what I like, and that's what I see. And I'm like, say, as a visionary, that's what I would like to see there. Um, and I don't have any commitment, not one, tonight, that I can share with you, but it's my vision that we would bring choices to the citizens of New Kent. I love the place that I go shopping now, I know the people by first name, they know me by first name. Here he comes again, hello, Mark. However, competition is good, and I'd like to have more than one choice to buy bacon or cheese or whatever. But, because if you go there now, that, you know, it's, uh, we, we've been through, uh, this period where, um, we understand what it means when there's only one, uh, provider in the marketplace, you've got what they got, and that's it. If you don't like it, go someplace else. So competition is, is good. I would love to see a facility built there, I think the timing, um, is becoming right, I'm not so sure that it's today. And I, and not going to tell you that I'm gonna bring next grocery store, but I will tell you that I've been talking to them, and that's the, that's the reason for the size of the building, they've all, the ones that I've spoken to have expressed the same thing. Without a building that size, and for comparison, the, the building across the street, I think it's forty-eight thousand square feet, so. I've also talked to, um, some restaurants, some family restaurants names that you would know, but I'm not, I mean, I don't have a commitment from one, not one. So I'm not gonna lie to you or mislead you, but it's my vision to have that there. Um, it's interesting to me that, that when we, um, introduced it, it was March, Pocahontas Center plus the mini storage. Um, I know that business, so I was the first, um, mini storage in the county years ago. And when we built that one, we said, okay, who wants to sit and look at the mini storage all day? We understand that. So if you go look at the facility that I have today, it's in the rear. Once that is established, you don't have to see it. So there are now, um, commercial buildings, um, there's, um, Bugle Time Coffee, um, there's, um, Whole Family Donuts, there's two, not one, two beauty salons in front. And so the whole idea is that people, once they know that it's there, it doesn't have to be something that you see every day. And so my concept, um, is to place my storage facility, because that's a business I do know, and that's, that is a business plan that I can go to a lender and say, I want to build the following things. That, all of the conditions, um, that the staff has recommended, I would agree with them, there's one that I'm gonna have trouble with, and, and I might as well just pull it right out. If you phase it and say you must do one before the other, that would be tantamount of going to buying a brand-new car, I had a discussion with this young man tonight. I said it'd be like going to a new, a car dealer and saying, by the way, sell me that car, and when you're done, I'm gonna go ahead and get a job. I tried it once, it just doesn't work. I can't tell you that if I went to a, to a lending institution, and this is gonna be millions, it's not gonna be, um, ten thousand or a hundred thousand. The engineering work alone is over two hundred thousand dollars before you ever touch a piece of dirt. And, and the property is expensive, but the next development in New Kent's going to be there. So it's gonna take, um, some initiative, and that's why I'm here. It's gonna take some risk, which I'm not afraid to take, but I'm not gonna lie to you and tell you, I, um, I, I can say that if I don't build one, I can't build the other. I, I will, um, say that it's, it's fair, and I'm willing to, to place the storage facility behind all the rest of the retail. That's easy. And if you look in your package, there's already built-in, uh, protection, because you have to, uh, buffer it all the way around. So I'm just a little baffled. In fact, I even called a fellow, um, he's a nice young man from the environmental department, I said, why, because it was on his part of the report, I said, is there an environmental reason for that? He said, no, he said, I, he said, I was just thinking of a way that might, that might could be a workable solution. So I commend him for that, but there's no, there's no environmental reason for it. So here's what I'll tell you. For every journey, there's a step. If you want to see something nice there, I ask you, uh, to allow me to, to begin the journey. This is the first step. I will not lie to you and tell you that I can get, uh, go to a lending institution and say, I must build this, and then I can build behind it, because I don't know at this day and age that, I, I can tell you what they'd say, no. Right now, there's a lot of money in the economy because of the COVID, um, the government's put a lot of money into it, but that's not gonna last forever. This is not a time to be going out and, and taking a high risk, I can tell you that. But again, I am willing, um, to do this, and my vision is to have something nice that you see when you go to that Brandy Creek Commons. And I'm willing to try it, and, um, I'm here to answer any questions. I'd like to have, uh, a nice, something that I could be proud of in that location. I'd like to bring choices to the citizens of New Kent.
Thank you, Mr. Daniel.
Okay.
At this, sorry, at this time, I will open the Citizens' Comment portion. I promise I'll get used to the microphones. Um, we don't have anyone signed up on the sheet. Um, is there anyone here tonight that wants to speak on this public hearing? Okay. I'll go ahead and close the Citizens' Comment portion. And, at this point, I will close, um, the application, the public hearing for Application CUP zero one dash two zero Pocahontas Center Retail and Mini Storage, and turn it back over to you, Madam Chief of Women.
Thank you, Kate. Do we have some discussion on this, commissioners?
Madam Chairman, I do, but this one's more for Kelly. We've, uh, got two terminology here, a mini storage warehouse and a mini storage facility. So there are two different types of buildings?
No, ma'am, that's just to include everything in that one definition. Yeah, they're basically the same thing.
Any other questions for Kelly or the applicant? Mr. Tiller?
Yes, and I, I know Mark said something about a buffer. Is it a fifty-foot buffer that has to be there in front of the mini storage? Because he said it was gonna be a buffer, and I was looking on the site, on the plans, and I didn't see.
What do you mean by a buffer? There's.
I thought he said something about a buffer in front. Did you, or did you not?
Yeah. Yeah, of course.
I'm sorry, I thought you said there was a buffer in place.
Yeah, and the definition's what's required for mini storage, you're supposed to have it screened all the way around.
Okay.
Yeah, so I don't know about the, the exact footage. And while I'm up here, um, she asked a question about mini storage facilities. I gotta tell y'all, again, I, I like to dream big things. Um, I'm trying something new, I'm building one building now, it's under construction. Instead of having all those things laid out in a row, if, um, we haven't opened yet, but it's a three thousand square foot building, has, um, climate control where people park, and they get up and they go inside. That's very interesting to me, and, and I can tell you that, uh, that's gonna be used there. And another thing, um, you might have noticed some of the boxes, they, they're called better box, you know, a home based out of Charles City, but how many of y'all have ever seen more than two or three laying in the yard somewhere? You don't, because they're out. I love that concept. And, and another thing that I'm interested in is having a building where you take those boxes, put them inside the building, now you don't see them, now they're climate controlled, nobody has that, that, that's a home run. Finally, I will say, I can tell you that I've been in, um, contact with the people who provide, some of you, this may appeal to you, um, solar energy, think about a long roof, that gives you an opportunity to place solar collectors, which you probably couldn't get in any other, uh, configuration, unless you have long distance. And I had a group come do a presentation, it's expensive, but I'm interested in that also. I mean, um, it's, it is probably a nineteen or twenty-year, um, um, forecast, but it's a great way to, um, to use that, that technology. So all those things I'm interested in, and I'm not interested in the same old, same old.
Yes.
Kelly? Can you, man?
Yes.
Okay, we got a VDOT report, but it's really not specifying a whole lot right at the moment. But are we still taking in consideration the grading of that Route sixty corridor? Are we going to be putting some kind of traffic control through there?
Mark can probably speak better to this, he's been in contact with the folks from Timmins who are working on the potential traffic study, should the use permit go through.
Forgive me. So, um, and this is second-hand information, I don't know, but I'm told that, um, that VDOT has just been working on it, just finished a study. The area, um, just west, west of us there, at that, um, for the new shopping center where the, the, um, traffic supply is, I believe that does meet the warrants for traffic, so I don't know, I can't speak to it, and I'm not an expert. And also know that when they built Patriots Land, and one of their proffered conditions was to put, um, a traffic light there. I've had discussions with Timmins, and we're prepared to do whatever they, they ask us to do. It's premature, that, that study alone would be tens of thousands, so, um, and, but, but believe me, before that we could do any of that, we'd have to meet all of those requirements. But today, if we said, okay, we're gonna put a stoplight right there, it'd probably add to the problem rather than take away, because it might back it up even further. That's ongoing, I know that VDOT has just, um, undertaken this study, I think they've, um, concluded it. I've been talking to the engineers that, um, that will, I will use, we hope to use for the project, and absolutely, because, again, you don't, we, we're not gonna, we don't wanna contribute, we're, I don't know how many hundreds of feet further east, but, um, think the time is coming where that could back up all the way, so. I suggest, it's just, it's like, um, if from a layman's point of view, that the things that are already in place are gonna continue to go there, and, and we will do whatever they ask us to do. And, but we have addressed it, and it's on our radar screen, and we're just waiting to, to see what's required.
It's, once you move further on through these kind of processes, the requirements get better explained and laid out from VDOT. Right now, it was kinda hard for them to make specific recommendations because they don't know what's going to go there, they're just kinda going on speculation.
Well, if you were, if you were to develop the back part before the front part, would you still require, VDOT still maybe require that the traffic be regulated with turning lanes and?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, if the mini storage use gets approved, it, and it, all of their requirements kinda depend on the amount of trips per day that are anticipated for the use, and a mini storage use has a lot lower of average trips per day than, say, a fifty thousand square foot retail. So if that's the case, and he does get a retail person to come in there on a site plan, then the requirements are gonna go way up.
I just don't want the headache, I, I believe that was one of your problems in your.
Yeah.
Route sixty area where the traffic was sort of, uh, backing up to go into food lines.
To Marketplace, right.
So I just wanted to make sure we're gonna have a plan before even all of this gets developed, that we can get the traffic off the road before it starts to bog down.
Right, they're working on that.
Okay.
I think I see a very nice turning that would be appropriate for fifty, forty-five mile an hour. But the idea of a, a light ever.
John, can you put your mic on, please?
Uh, a light ever going down there is, no, no way. If we can't get a light at Food Line, we're not gonna probably get a light for mini storage and possibility of something else. Because, um, you need two hundred and fifty left-hand turns twice a day in an hour. And we don't have anything close to that, at, even at the Food Line.
I believe you're going to see a light there. Um, I believe that, that, that VDOT has, has done the, um, study, I think the warrants, um, are sufficient, that you will see, and again, you already got someone in place, it's been their, uh, Patriots Land and Proffered to put one in, so I'm sure all that's gonna be worked out. It, today, um, again, anything that VDOT says we would have to, obviously, we were prepared and ready to do, but it would be a great mistake to put it, like you said, there today, you might contribute to the problem rather than, so, I'm just gonna wait and see if another question.
I'm sorry, one more thing. Rodney? Can I have a comment on that? On that light? Please?
Thank you, yes. Uh, VDOT has recently, um, completed a light study at the Marketplace Drive, um, in Route sixty area, and they've determined that the warrants are met for a light. Um, VDOT, right now, currently, is undertaking an entire study of the entire corridor on Route sixty, to not just, uh, come up with a plan to construct the light, but look at other improvements that will help that whole area as far as a traffic flow.
Please remind VDOT that in the PUD, uh, East-West Community is to pay for that light.
There, there are definitely some proffers there, that, that we're all aware, yes.
For the PUD, okay. Very good, very good.
Didn't, I think, those proffers that East-West made expired either a year or two years ago? I think they had a ten-year, they had a ten-year lifespan on those proffers.
You're, you're right. In, in the state of Virginia, proffers are good for ten years. Um, and that period has expired, yes.
Cortez?
Yeah.
Right now, what I'm hearing is, um, you have a solid plan for the mini storage, but as far as the Pocahontas Center retail space, it's still an idea that's in development, right?
Sorry, I couldn't understand the language.
Okay. I said, as far as the Pocahontas Retail Center itself, you don't have, um, you don't have any commitments, and it's still pretty much an idea, correct?
Yes, ma'am, forgive me, I'm gonna laugh, I was looking at Patty, I thought she was speaking, I said.
The reason why I ask that is because, and you can elaborate on it more, when I think about the, the amount of folks that's located within New Kent, and I think about the building space, and I als- I'm also looking at the commercial, uh, leases. Commercial leases are much more different than, you know, just residential leases. It requires much more, um, longer terms. Uh, I think about the amount of heads that we have in New Kent County. The last thing I want to see is a bunch of empty retail spaces in that area is developing so nicely. So, that's something that I think about, um, because long-term, folks love when new things come in, but when you think about what happens to, uh, commercial ten and twenty years, things change. And tha- that's why I asked that question.
I speak to it like this, as a commercial real estate broker, I mean, if you develop something nice, and I don't. I speak to it like this as a commercial real estate broker. I mean, if you develop something nice, and I don't think it's anybody in this room that has gone there and knows what I'm talking about, wouldn't agree, that's nice. You build it to that, that level and that's my vision, that's what I wanna do. The one time there was nothing there. I left, y'all will laugh at this. One time I told my wife on a Tuesday, cause I owed a lot of money, so I'm not coming home. Something changes in boundaries, we don't sell some of that land, we're gonna lose everything. And so, two businesses came out of that and I got to go back home. That was a good part too. But that's the next, if you go look in that corridor, that's the next area that's going to be developed. If it had been developed or something had been prepared before, I think maybe the, some of the businesses, I can't speak to it. But in other words, it's, that's what's gonna happen next. So it's going to happen. Question is, what do you want to happen there? If we've got a vision, we've got a goal to go toward. If you say nothing, if we don't have that, none of these retailers are interested. If they can't build a bu, building big enough to put what they all expect now. And that building there, if you go to the, I'll just say it, but this is not an endorsement, the Publix, that's right about forty-eight thousand square feet. That's, that's perfect. And the little shops next to it, I really see it. So to, to speak to what you're saying, everything in the marketplace is a risk versus a return. You know, I've gotten to the point in my life where, you know, why, why would you do it? I believe and I wanna see something nice there. I'd rather see that, and don't take anything away from it. I love used car lots, but I don't wanna see one there, right? But I think that, that would be a great location to have exactly what that is. And I'm willing to try if you're willing to try.
Ms. Chair?
Joe?
I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Uh, Mr. Daniel, a couple of questions too. Regarding the phasing, if you had to phase, there's one entrance proposed, is that correct?
VDOT will probably only let you have one.
So if you had to phase in, you would have to create a separate construction entrance or the construction entrance would be?
No, in other words, it'd all be the same. I, I would, now there won't be two, forgive, forgive me. So that's why it confused me when I first heard talk about Pocahontas Center and the mini storage. I see it all as one part, part of, it's gonna be one. And I told this environmental plan today too, I don't think we should do five plans, we should do one, right? Let's get it right, let's do one, let's mitigate it all at one time.
But if you had to phase, that you'd be using the same entrance for the retail that if it does open prior to the mini stores, then you'd have the construction equipment or the construction entrance be using the same one if you had, if you had to phase. Otherwise, as you're phasing, if you had to phase, also there's probably utilities that would be, it wouldn't make any sense to not continue a certain utility or site work.
Well, Mr. Davis, they would tell you if you go down there, you, you're gonna get an entrance that needs to be right here, right? And so when they say that, they're gonna, they're not just gonna be arbitrary about it, they're gonna back it up with my, our engineers say it needs to be right there. And they're gonna say, and with our authority and our engineers, and if you wanna come out of this room with a yes, it's gonna be right there. So that's what we're gonna, everyone will have to do. There wouldn't be but one, I wouldn't think. But again, the idea would not be to piecemeal it, but to do it all at one time and do, do, do what you're required and do something that people, that you'd be proud of. Cause people are gonna know. Everybody sat in this, this room tonight that you looked at it. I like to be part of, of good things. So I wanna make sure it's something I'm proud of too.
Okay. Mr. Moya?
Um, we, we've had two developments that had to do with commercial. One is the Brickshaw area. That initial plan was a million square feet of commercial. There's less than a hundred square, a hundred thousand square feet right now.
Yep.
That dream never came, okay? And six hundred and fifty homes are back there. The original plan for, on the other side of the Catholic Church was Boyd's plan for Liberty Landing. Their idea was apartments, townhouses, and then we'll give you this great retail in front.
Right.
Who's gonna be there? They didn't know.
I can answer that for you. Guess what? They're not prepared to do it. They say we can't build it. They're, they're trying to back, my, my information is they say we, we can't build that project unless we have the homes. So they're not even willing to come forward.
What am I saying, what I'm saying, is that any different than you can't do the project without the?
Yes, because again, houses, you have to, to service a house. It's a piece of paper.
No, I understand, yes, yeah.
A, a facility like that, they make money. I pay taxes. I mean, that's not something that costs you anything. That meets the goals and, and objectives of your plan and it's in the back, we can't even see it for goodness sakes until it gets established with it. It's not a hand grenade factory, right? So, there, and you're talking, if I had to think about an example of how phasing could, could, could go wrong, I would point to you right behind us over here. They built those buildings before they built the houses and the bankruptcies were in the tens of millions, right? I sold the, the business when it came out of receivership. You cannot go today, I wouldn't tell, I would advise anyone, would not advise them, you can't say I'm gonna build this, but I won't build what I know until this happens. Cause that might, may or may not ever happen. But if, if it does, the mini storage is not a house, it doesn't cost you, it brings you things and meets your goals and objectives. It's back out of the way, it's buffered, and I don't see it as a negative. But Bridgewater has not, if you notice, they haven't come forward because they haven't offered to build one, one acre of it, right? Why? Cause they don't even wanna build a retail.
Madam Chair, I have a few questions for Mr. Dan, Daniels before he sits down again. Were there any other uses considered other than mini storage for the rear of the property?
For the rear of the property?
Yes, sir.
I will talk to you like an honest man and tell you I understand that business. I proposed it because I have, I have some experience in it. And when people ask me, well, what do you think, will this work in this market? Well, I know because I'm involved with it. I, I don't know. I don't know if anyone else has come forward and say, I wanna risk ten million dollars and I wanna put my putt and range back there. I guess it might work. I don't know anything about anything else. But I'm not prepared to, I don't know of anything more than my best idea of what would work. And that's, that's what I know.
Do you know how many mini storage facilities are in New Kent County today?
Yeah, I was the first one. I think there's been three or four others. And each time when someone came along, I wasn't the one that stood and said, we don't want no more mini storages. I said, build it nice and come on. You can do it. It's a market-driven situation. If you've got the hoots pine, you've got the bravery to take a risk and return, just let the market decide.
In our consideration for a conditional use permit, one of the things that we look at as commissioners is how well it adheres to the comprehensive plan. Comprehensive plan recognizes this area's village. Can you tell me how the site or the buildings comply or use village concepts?
What of the buildings, sir? I'm sorry, I haven't heard.
The site or the buildings, how they, how they incorporate village concepts.
Kelly could, could tell you the definition better than I, but I mean, the village, mini storages aren't forbidden in the village. They just require.
That's not the question I'm asking is.
All right.
You put a pre, a presentation or an application in.
Yes.
Where to evaluate it.
Yes.
Based upon the comprehensive plan.
Yes.
Because it is a conditional use permit.
Yes.
Village Concepts has certain objectives that it's trying to achieve to, for these considerations.
Yes, sir.
How does your site or your proposal meet those objectives?
It provides a high-scale retail area, which I hope will be shops. I hope will be a family restaurant that I'm talking to. I hope will be places where you can go get your, your haircut. Maybe places that you can go buy insurance. All these things are, are in, people who live in the village have to use these things, right? I mean, you, you have to go buy your groceries. You have to have all these things. And believe it or not, people need storage. And a lot of the customers that I have now are not long-term. There's people that are buying homes in New Kent. When they come, they've sold their home. Like today, if you put it on the market, they're myself and New Kent right, right now, what you gonna do if you stop? A lot of customers I have, they'll, they're gonna store their stuff for two months while their home is being built. So it's absolutely a necessity or it would not be viable. So the comprehensive plan recommends services for drive-up in the village and I think all of the uses that I proposed are recommended in the plan. And the goals and objectives certainly. Did, did I get close?
I'll take your, your, your words under consideration.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. That's all I ask.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, a few more questions, Mr. Moya. The schematic plans that we see are not to scale and it demonstrates fifty thousand square feet of retail, forty-seven thousand square feet of mini storage.
Yes.
And then there's two building pad sites. So, we're probably approaching a hundred thousand square feet envisioned for this property. When you call, when you factor in the necessary parking, stormwater management, landscape areas and setbacks, is what your application have? And is that achievable on the eight to ten acres? It seems to me mighty, mighty aggressive.
You know, you know, again, I am an ultimate optimist. That's why I'm here. And I'm preparing to spend a great deal of money with the best engineering firm in this area, one of the best. And they've already got a proven track record. And if it isn't there, I won't be able to do it, obviously. But again, there's, there, if I had, New Kent just went through a process, and I'm not trying to be ugly here, I'm not trying to point at negatives. Where there was another retail initiative, if you will, at the corner of Tunstall Road and two forty-nine, they went through this whole process, guess what? And they didn't get approved. And they spent tens of, maybe hundreds of thousands of dollars. I'm telling you that if you would like to see something nice there, I'm proposing to do it. I'm just asking for your permission. So, I don't know, but if it didn't, if it wasn't able to be done, the engineers won't be able to, it'll have to meet or exceed all the, all of the requirements of our zone and staff and of course, VDOT and whomever, environmental, the whole, whole cadre of people.
Madam Chair, I think I've finished both my questions.
Thank you, Ms. Bennett.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Mr. Moya?
One, it's Kelly. If I'm reading this correctly, under village, one of the stipulations is allowable land use is retail stores of modest scale. Big box realtors are not considered an appropriate use in villages. So, is, do we have a definition of square footage of a big box realtor?
If you look at the zoning ordinance, the property is, the property is zoned business. And in business, you need a use permit for anything over thirty thousand square feet. So that's what we use.
Okay, so that, but even though the comprehensive plan said, okay, I got you.
Yeah, the, this whole area is kind of on the border between the village and the commercial, which is why I included the definitions for both in the staff memo.
Oh, Mr. Daniels, I'm, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
You referenced and, and we all know the, the overlay district. What would the overlay look if only the big, the.
Storage.
The public, the mini storage was there. What would that look like then? Cause we have a rendering of what the building would look like.
First of all, I, I, it's been mentioned and I'm agreeable to it, to have it so far back, was it three hundred and fifty feet? I mean, that's been long on a football field. So let me just tell you something. If you've got that much developed land along Route sixty.
I don't know if that matters for an overlay.
It, it should matter because what I'm saying is you also have to do the buffers even if you don't build the stuff. So, I mean, there are, that's still in place. You still have to buffer it from being seen.
Back to Mr. Tiller's question about it would be, there would be buffers that would be built.
Yes, that's already, yes, in the code.
The retail would be.
If, if you build any.
Between retail and mini storage.
If you build any storage facility, you have to do it. So yes, it's gotta be there. That's already in, that's in there, in your code.
Very good.
Any other questions or comments or input?
My question is, I'm kinda familiar with this parking lot right here. I only have one big problem with this parking lot. It's when you get behind the, like the bank and is there a chicken place and a pizza place? But they have all of the entrance, they, they can exit from behind the buildings, but they put them into a four-way stop signs. And to me, the traffic has been kind of chaotic because nobody knows what the rules are. It's kinda like a roundabout. You don't know what a four-way stop sign is. Are you gonna be able to sort of redirect traffic and control that a little bit?
I share, I share it too because I don't know what to do when I get in that little lane between them, but those are two separate. In other words, the front, as I understand it, if you go look now, they've got all these businesses along three sixty and then there's like a little entrance road, then there's this. I don't see that, I don't plan to put a road between them and put building on both sides of it. So I, I, I think you're right and I wouldn't wanna say it either. If I had to tell you what the traffic recommendation would be, VDOT's gonna say it needs to be here, that's gonna be your entrance, you're gonna go right to, to that and you'd have to go around it to get to the other thing.
Okay. I'm just somewhat unhappy with the way that was designed because it makes going to the other places somewhat difficult.
If you notice, they were, they were there, the C N F Bank and what's along there is a, like a Rally's Burger or something. They were there. This has just recently been done. This has been done sort of like an addition too. So I don't think they really had any, any ability to change, but I can't really speak to it, I don't know. But when I walked into that parking lot again and I, and I was in my truck, I said, I can park. I said, this is me, I like it. So why can't I park and I can't park at home? I got to thinking about it, went back to it. I said, cause I gotta make that right turn and get in there and, and I just can't do it. So I like that concept, but you're right, I don't like the separation. I would, I'm not intending to do nothing like that.
Okay. The other thing would be for Ms. Kelly. The building designs, does this all imply for this particular area?
Yes, the bottoms bridge overlays got architectural standards. Yep, this would apply.
And my last question was, is the C U P comes up, does this have an expl, uh, expiring date that we can put on it?
We put, that's the tenth condition. Yeah, we put a five-year window.
Five years.
And that's consistent with other mini storage C U Ps that we've done?
Don't go away, I've got a couple of questions.
Okay.
You, you were saying that that's consistent with, with other mini storage. So, so I'm assuming that if the, the mini storage is built first, that that would be issued a certificate of occupancy that would stop the clock.
That's the way that's written right now, yes.
Okay.
But these, these are draft. I mean, they can be.
Okay.
More specified.
The other, the other idea could be that it doesn't stop the clock until the certificate of occupancy on the.
Retail.
The center is, is, is completed.
That's a possibility.
Okay.
Yep.
Now, I know that in the, in the draft conditions, it's forty, forty-eight thousand and there was a, there was a note in, in the packet that they requested fifty thousand, is that correct?
Yeah, he came back with an amendment to his application, right, for fifty thousand.
I, I am in a li, really in alignment with the, Mr. Bennett's comments about the.
Be tight.
Size of the lot and.
Yeah.
How this might be jangled in, into it. I, I am a little concerned. Just looking at the, the one condition where it talks about there has to be no, no less than three hundred and fifty feet off of the, off of sixty. That, that line is pretty far back.
Yeah.
But i, if, if you're willing to accept that, that, that restriction.
That's a question I'm willing to try. Generally, we don't know because this has been a preliminary, preliminary engineering work done, but you won't know. And again, that's tens of thousands of dollars. I'm ready to take the risk. It's my guess that that's probably five to six hundred feet deep. As, and just do the math, three fifty, that leaves you so many feet. So I'm gonna put there what's, what we can put there. And it is quite a risk. But again, I, I want to see something nice there. I'm willing to take it. If you've got the nerve and authority to go with me, I'm ready to go. And I won't be waiting, I'll be jumping on it. My contract has to be answered in September. So, that's my timetable. If I don't get some relative assurance that we can do it, it's probably mute because I'm gonna go to something else and somebody else might come along and do it. But if you got the nerve and authority to do it, I'm, that's my vision, that's what I want to do.
The la, last question I have and this may be for, for environmental staff. The, the one condition regarding the use of oil water separators in the stormwater management. Is that, is that a requirement for the runoff, the parking lot for the, for the retail space? Or is that a also a requirement of any mini storage?
Both.
Both?
Yes.
Okay.
Anything else?
Uh, I thi, think that's it.
Okay. Mr. LaRochelle?
One question I have is if your dream were come true, you built the retail center and you got a big chain. and you got a big chain supermarket to come in there, do you think that economy can support three grocery stores, all within probably a mile and a half from each other? Or would you expect more of those people to manage it?
I think competition's healthy, right? And so, right now, there's one, there's one player in the market, there's one. And I, and I love those people there, but I love, I love other things too. Why, why shouldn't we try to have other places have, right? And, and again, it's not a marketplace decision for me, will they buy? It's gonna be driven, they're gonna, they're just not gonna waltz in there and put that money down. They're gonna study the heck out of it too. That's why I'm telling you, I don't have a commitment today as we speak. But I, and, and, and the question was asked earlier about the forty-eight to fifty thousand dollars. That was driven by one of them, said, "If we didn't have that, we probably wouldn't even be interested." But if it had that, the more that you can, you can tailor this vision, if you will, or this, this initiative to what we're gonna normally build, and the greater the chances are we're gonna do it, or consider it. And there's going to be, okay, so let's think about this. Forgive me, stop me in time, I don't mean, I just go on too much. So, there's gonna be, New Kent is a great place to live. And the whole universe, I tell people, this is the center right here. I'm so proud to be from New Kent, and other people are starting to recognize that fact too. There's more people that wanna be here than we have units to put them, right? That drives and supports the, the price of our real estate. If you had anything to sell today, and it's moderately priced, it's gonna go, right? I mean, look around, that's gonna continue. So, you have to ask for nice things to get them. That's why I want something nice there. Rather than have, you know, some five lots, this, that, this, that. I wanna build something nice that I'm proud of. So, I would tell you that if they didn't think it would happen, they wouldn't put their money up, and it would, would never get off the ground to begin with. But I do have interest, I don't have an commitment.
Madam Chair, one more question for Kelly, please. Regarding the conditional use permit, we're not considering two individual conditional use permits. We're considering one conditional use permit for both uses, correct?
Yeah, and Brendan and I talked about this earlier. It's, it's kind of a two combined into one application, because the code says you need a use permit to do retail over thirty thousand square feet. So, that's one. And you also need a use permit to do mini storage and business, period. So, the way we were talking, I mean, we didn't really, like, divide out the conditions based on the use, kind of made it combined into one site, since it's all gonna be on one parcel.
My fear is that one use will come, not the other. And then we're left as a county to deal with one use, instead of the combined. Thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Thomas?
Kelly, so if, for instance, the facilities in the front didn't, didn't appear, then that CUP for that facility after the expiration date, it would no longer be applicable, right?
That's a good question. I don't know. I think...
What you're saying is that if you start construction on the mini storage, then the five years is done immediately. So, if nothing happens in the front, that can go forever.
If it's not specified in the condition, then John's right.
So, that would be my only problem. If we have had some applications here, excuse me, I've had a talk, that showed up like twenty-five years later, and it was like, where did this come from? Because it did not have expiration dates on it, and it really did not adhere to the, the area of use at that time. It had changed so much.
Yeah.
Is there some way that we can sort of have a protection for that? Or does that have to be a separate, two separate?
Think about this for a minute, right? So, all the development you see on Route sixty right now, there is no more. There's only one lot on that side of the road, and it's up next to the Waffle House. You gotta go through that road, there is no more land. So, it's gonna happen, there's gonna be people. So, that land has got, it's got the traffic, it's got water, it's got sewer, it's got utilities. That's a, if this happens, someone's gonna put something there. That's, 'cause it's gonna, that's the natural accession, accession, if you will, of what's gonna happen in Bottoms Bridge. There, there are no more places. I think it might be one more site on the Patriot side, but everything else is used. Don't worry, someone would use that, it will, it's gonna go up greatly in value once the ability to develop it. Again, so, it sounds like an easy thing to do, but just the engineering work, two hundred thousand dollars for engineering work. Think about it, you have it in the corridor, zone for business, with utilities, with the engineering work done. It, it, I'd be amazed if something didn't happen quick. But I, I'm not gonna lie to you and tell you that it's gonna happen, that I've got it lined up. But I, that's not a, from a risk point of view, that's a safe bet, something gonna happen there, because that's, there's no more land, and that's the next step. You go look, there's nothing else there.
Any other questions or comments?
So, number eight, the phasing plan is stating that the retail has to be done before the, before the mini storage, correct?
I mean, nine percent of the mini storage could be built, and the last ten percent is... How do you, how does that translate into practice?
Right. We didn't get in, down into that specific level. I mean, the intent of that condition was to have the, the retail portion completed before the mini storage. So, you could, so it was screened. We can specify.
I think you spoke to us earlier, right? If that's your...
Again, imagine yourself going to a lender and saying, "I wanted to borrow ten million dollars." And they say, "Great, how will you pay it back?" "Well, I've got this great building for, for a grocery store and an Italian restaurant, this place." "Okay, so show me where they put their, where, where their risk is." And I don't have it. If you do that, it's tantamount to saying, "No." I understand that, that you wanna guard against it. But again, I'm trying to tell you that I don't know that I could even borrow the money for the project if you stipulate that you can't build. The one thing that I know that I can borrow the money and, and start the project. You say that, I don't know that I could, that, that would be tantamount to saying, "No." But think about this for a moment, again. It's gonna be there, in place, zoned, with utilities, and there's no other place. Think about the growth that you've seen, it's gonna happen. That's, that's almost, I can't fathom the, the, the fact that something won't happen there. But I can't tell you that I won't be, will be able to borrow the money if I say, "Until I build a grocery store, I won't be able to build the things that I know, the business that I know." So, you, you should search your heart, if that's really something that bothers you, should vote no. But I, I think that you're missing an opportunity. I won't be able to borrow the money if you make that a necessity.
But we don't have a guarantee that we'll only have mini storage, correct?
Yeah, well, I, I'm not gonna build it in a place where it shouldn't go. It's going to be buffered. It's allowed with permit, permitted use if you, if you follow the regulations. I'm agreeing to do all that. But I'm not gonna build many storage in the front, no. I think that'd be a waste, that's, that's valuable frontage. That's hard to come by. Land that's developed, zoned, with utilities, that's, that's a, that's a commodity. And so, something will go there, and, and again, with, if, if you've got the vision to allow... Someone said, you know, "Why do we want big, there's already big buildings there? They're there now." The building across the street is forty-eight thousand square feet, or thereabouts. The Tractor Supply, no mom and pop, that's a pretty good sized store. It's already there. So, something of that nature will go in that spot. I cannot tell you that I'm not gonna, I cannot guarantee that if you say you can't build the mini storage, you can't build the shopping center, I don't, that would be, I'm not gonna lie to you. I don't have that tonight. So, if that, if that really bothers you, you should vote no for it. But I can tell you that I'm, I'm willing to risk it. But there's, there is no way that you can guarantee it. And that'd be like tantamount to putting a moratorium on mini storages. Maybe you should change the code. That's allowed in our code. It's not a hand grenade factory. You can't build something ugly.
Mr. Moya?
You're not saying that. You came, you came with a combination of...
Uses.
Okay, maybe if you came with a mini storage permit, we may be sitting here with different conversations, okay? But you came with a combination, and that, that, that makes it a little more interesting.
You know, Ms. Moya, you're right. I mean, I could have said, "I wanna build a mini storage on the front of it," but that's a waste. That's not what, this is what belongs in the front, not the mini storage.
I agree completely.
Right. But if I, I mean, let me see if I can cast this in another light. If I came to you tonight, and I said, "I wanna build a mini storage on the front of this building," would you say no? You'd have to have a reason. It, it's in the comprehensive plan, meets the goals, it's just takes a permit. I, I don't want you to do that. I want you to, to allow me to build that. But again, the, I want to also include the storage. It's not a, something that's bad. People say, "Well, we got too many of them," yeah? But to have one, I cannot guarantee that I can build the first, build that store. And then, well, I can tell you, I won't be able to borrow the money. So, it is what it is. If you'd like to have something there, I'm willing to try, unless you've got somebody else that's willing to put up that kind of money. That maybe, maybe that's the next application. But somebody will have to do something, and they're gonna have to come to you, just like I am. So, that's all I got.
So, what will change that make, that will allow you to borrow the money if you have the mini storage? I mean, I know you'll have an income, but there's, it's still gonna be risky.
Oh, yes, you better believe it's risky. You can believe it's gonna be risky. But again, what, what do you do professionally? You know what you do, right? And someone comes to you and say, "Mr. LaRochelle, you're a gold dealer, and I wanna ask you about gold and diamonds." And you say, "Yeah, I know all about, I know about that, that industry, right? I've been involved with them, I've had one for over twenty years. I know what to build." These people call me, you know, once a month, trying to buy mine and, and, and tell me, you know, you know, these are the statistics. That, that's, that makes me comfortable enough to take that risk. Because everything's a risk and return.
How many grocery stores have you contacted?
You promise you won't laugh? I contacted all that I could, probably more than twenty.
Okay. And when you contacted more than twenty, do they give you a criteria for them to come to this area?
Yes.
As far as traffic and head count and...
Yes, ma'am.
I ask that because I'm trying to figure out, if you've contacted more than twenty, and you have this idea, there is no commitment or no one that's willing to fight at this point? Because I know, when I think about the economics, I'm thinking about the head count and how many folks that's, the traffic that's coming in and out for them to even approve it. I know because I've been looking for grocery stores in District Three, so...
Ms. Thomas, I just gotta tell you, your voice sounds just like Patricia, Patty's. Every time you talk, I'm looking back and I say, "Your mouth is not moving, where is that coming from?" Forgive me, yeah, oh, sure, yeah. Right now, think about this. The unemployment commission is working overtime, right? What's going on in the nation right now, right? COVID has shut the whole nation down. This, I can tell you this, this is a true conversation. In March, this lady from Florida said, "Yeah, we'd love to be there, but you know what? They shut us down till June, but anyone would always be today, it just is." And there's gonna be something there. It's a question of what? And again, you, you can guide it. The idea about building and they will come is what they did behind us here. At this New Kent, it's beautiful stuff, right? But it, it was certain ruin for many people. You can't do that, but what you can do is say, "I have gone to the people who are responsible and sold them on this vision, and if you have to have commercial zoning, which we have, and you have to have a nice parking lot, I've got that approved. I've got the engineering, you know, I had a great picture, and you have the capabilities of building." They will not build, I've yet to run to anybody who says, "I wanna build, build a mini store." I mean, retail like that's gonna want a store that they can put all the goods in, just like that. That's probably the, the epitome of a flagship of a, of a grocery store, right? And if you go look, that's what they all wanna build. So, with that, without that as a minimum...
But you have to know an average of all those grocery stores that you asked. You have to know an average of how many rooftops they want.
Oh, oh, forgive me, you know what? I didn't answer your question. I've been working with Matt Smoleneck, he's helped me get that together. There are criteria, and we've been working, and I think he mentions that in the package. He's been talking to him too. But I'm not gonna lie to you and say so-and-so's gonna be here if you do this tonight, 'cause I, they, nobody told me that yet. That's, that would be untrue. But he is contacting them, we have gotten that together, and it's gonna happen, it's a question of when.
You don't have an average number?
Well, everybody's good at something, right? They don't let me handle numbers because I would mess it up. That's not my gift.
Oh.
But, 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 but we have people whose job it is to do it, Matt Smoleneck, and he's been helping me with it. And it says as much in your, in your package. And by the way, that's just not a number, that's like a, it's almost like a book of stuff. It's a lot of details they want. They want housing, they want medium income, they want distance to, you want school scores, they want all kind of stuff. It's a, it's an intense battery of things.
Mr. Moya?
You have not presented those things to the grocery store? Because they're, on our website, on the county's website, in the strategic planning initiative, and also on the website, we talk about how much grocery business that we send out of the county.
Yep.
Every, every day.
Yes, sir.
And, you know, that would be one of the strong selling points, I would think.
I'm with you, but the different ones have, they're, even though they're, they're similar, they all have a little something different, and that's Matt's department. Rather than tell you, I know something about it. But yeah, he's been working on it, he's been very helpful too. We're, we're getting there.
Ms. Chair, Ms. Thomas?
I just wanna bring to the commissioners, I know probably ten years ago, we had a conversation about development, and then what our real purpose is here to, tonight is to complete, whether or not it is appropriate for the area. The risk is not necessarily something that we put in our decisions here, because it's the development and what's going to be happening to other people in that surrounding area. So, I would just say to, to think about this, but make sure that, you know, you don't...
Sure.
Don't vote for something because of a possibility he will fail. There might be a possibility, but that's the risk that you take with any business. Our white development up in Sandston or Richmond, if you look at that now, I mean, it's starting to, to lose all of their tenants up there. But, I mean, this is just the risk that happens. We just wanna make sure, though, if you are going to develop it, not to leave it looking like a construction site, because it didn't complete.
I get that, I'm with you on that one too. That's right.
Thanks, Ben.
Getting to that highest and best use of, of that space. Yeah, my, 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 my real concern with this isn't, isn't the mini, mini storage, but i- if you're telling me that you're gonna put the mini storage in first, and before you, before you fully lay out the, the entire site, you might be shooting yourself in the foot.
I'm not saying that, but I'm telling you that if, if you make it a condition that I have to, then it's gonna very severely affect my ability to do it. I, I hope that'll happen simultaneously, but if you say you can't do one thing or the other, I would be forced to, if you think about this, if you close on the land, do the engineering work, in the meantime, till they sign, eight percent of a million dollars is six hundred and, six thousand, six hundred and sixty-some dollars a month. So, that's one million, or two million, it doubles. So, you're talking about eighteen, twenty million, twenty thousand dollars a month. I mean, you know, you, and, and those numbers are high, and they're scary. But I've done them for years, and I'm telling you, I'm ready to take the risk, but I don't want to tie my hands and say, "Well, I can't do anything that might bring an income stream" until, I, I wouldn't, that, that would be a foolish risk for anyone.
No, I, and I, I understand that. I'm just, I'm wrestling with the, put it, putting the appropriate conditions in here to, to make everything flow, flow properly. And you can, you can get down to what you need to do, but we're gonna, we're gonna end up with a really good product.
Yes, that's what I want too.
Any other questions or comments from anybody?
So, one of the stipulations for mini storage...
Um, so, one of the stipulations for mini storage for these, it has to be set back, um, no less than three hundred and fifty feet from Route Sixty. So, given that, what, can you build what you want to build in the pictures in the, that you've provided? The fifty thousand square foot anchor tenant and the major tenant and the shops and the parking?
Well, again, I hope to, um, but if I can't, I mean, that's, that's, the risk is on me. I wouldn't, I wouldn't, uh... I understand that the part up front needs to be, that's really the most valuable part of the property, would be that. And, um, and whatever else I do will have to fit what's left. I understand that. I'm willing to take that risk.
Thank you. We're talking about, in, in, um, rough speaking, four hundred and thirty thousand square feet. Okay? Ten acres is roughly that. So, we're, you're saying three hundred and fifty, uh, I guess that was the planning department said, "Three hundred and fifty back." And then it, how big are the dimensions for the mini storage? And is that something we should know now? Okay.
Well, um, I think that, um, and, and I saw it, I was surprised with it. I said, I think she came up with forty-eight thousand square feet of mini store. I said, "How did she come up with that?" And I started rethinking about it. They had the planning department. I said, "Oh, I see. On the picture, it's drawing a building and it gives you a dimension of, I'm gonna make this up, twenty by whatever." I said, "She did the math." That's acceptable parameters. It won't exceed that. It'll probably be smaller. And again, I'm interested, that, if, what she's laying out there and that, that's a traditional, you know, drive up in the doors. It won't be all that, but I'll have to work within those parameters. I'm not gonna exceed it. And, and if it doesn't fit, it won't go there. And that won't be on you, it'll be on me. I'm be foolish, you know?
Well, that, that's why I don't see how we can do this without a condition of both site plans need to be done.
Only be one site plan. Be one site plan for the whole thing.
One site plan.
Yeah.
And that would have to be approved like that, because the mini storage could go from the back to the front.
No, it's, it won't come across that line of three hundred and fifty feet.
I'm just saying, we, we don't have a guarantee on that.
Well, no, that's one of the properties. Yeah, yeah, well, we can do that. That's a condition. Yeah, we're good.
Well, it's just part of the thing. Good.
That's the, that's the difficult part about this process, is that the use permit is to allow for the use. But you don't get down into the details of the site plan until you allow for the use. So, it's hard to, you know, he's got schematics, but once you get out there and do the engineering, it could be different.
Mr. Bennett?
Kelly, um, I'm gonna go out on a limb here.
Okay.
Understand that we're looking at use, but we're looking at two uses here.
Right.
That both need a conditional use permit individually, if they are to be applied to this property. I think some of the commissioners, myself, we want to make sure that the mini storage, although it's necessary, is hidden from Route Sixty. Mr. Daniels is very well spoken, and I think he'll do everything he possibly can do. But my concern is the property can't support this kind of development. The mini storage will likely get used, but when it comes to the retail, it will have to be scaled back so it does not represent a curtain to that mini storage use. That's my fear. I understand buffers in place, but the buffers are not along Sixty. The buffers are around the perimeter property. And the, and the, and the retail is being used as the buffer to the mini storage. So, that's one of my fears. The other fear that I have is that it's a very intensive, I mean, there is almost a hundred thousand square feet on ten acres. And retail demands somewhere between three and four parking spaces per thousand square feet. So, there's two hundred and fifty, two hundred parking spaces, and then you have your islands and things of that nature. And then you have your landscape zones, and then you have your building setback areas, all that. And I think it's, is a zealous, um, outlook. I encourage, I encourage it to be a zealous outlook, but I think once reality comes in, we're gonna see a far different product. And I think as commissioners, we need to know more information on that product. At this point, I appreciate all the information you've presented, but I think you're too early in your presentation. I think we, there's gotta be more notes. Thank you.
Those, um, minimum standards are not up to, to, um, discussion. You gotta meet them. Right? The county says you have to have X, and your site plan has got to meet or exceed it. You don't have the ability to say, "Well, I'll do it, but you gotta cut me some slack on this one." No, it's gotta, it's gotta have those things in it. So, you, you won't get your site plan approved.
Any thoughts, considerations, questions? Motion? Opinions?
I mean, and you feel free to add conditions, you know, suggest conditions, if you want to be specific to one of the uses. This is just a place to start.
Can, can I ask one clarification question? Um, you know, we were talking about bu- buffers and, and setbacks. Are the, usually the buffer standards are, are talking about the entire parcel. But we've got two specific uses, and the, the buffers are gonna be applied to each one of those? In, in the, in the site, in the site plan?
Yeah, she says in the requirements that it's gonna be buffered. And that's don't, that even the, that's gonna be separate, that's gotta be buffered all the way around, right? And that's what she said. Yeah, I'm good with that.
Yeah, I, it's...
It's gonna be, have to be one between the zone, the, the mini storage except and whatever. I mean, that's where the mini storage, um, is written into it.
Yeah, it, it's kinda confusing because there's three sets of buffers that we're talking about. In the Bottoms Bridge Overlay District, that's not really a buffer, but it does have certain requirements that he's gonna have to meet, um, architecturally and stuff like that. For the mini storage use, there's performance standards, which include buffering and fencing and screening and stuff like that. And then you've got the transitional buffer with the landscaping between the business zone property and the A-one zone property to the west, east. That's a different kind of buffer. So, there's, there's several.
They got buffer for everybody.
Yeah. And those are site plan requirements. Those aren't conditions. Those are whether you have a use permit or you're just doing a site plan.
Thank you.
If the scenario that Mr. Bennett just explained, where you build a mini storage down the road, you're, you're looking at the commercial, uh, development and parking considerations and everything else forces you to compress that, what are, what are the options with the retail pad sites? Could they be dedicated to parking in that scenario? Or are you treating those as they've gotta be developed as retail pad sites?
It's zone for retail. It's highly, it'd be high, highly valuable land because it's on the corridor and has utilities. It's in the growth pattern. There's nowhere else to go. So, again, the market's gonna tell you, and you can't build something that, that doesn't meet or exceed what the standards are. So, there's no scenario that I, that I can think of where you would not have to meet or exceed what the county's minimum standards are. And, and nobody was gonna build something, um, because, I mean, that's, that's, it has a effect of law, right? It's a, it's an ordinance, has a rule of law, effective law, so you gotta, you gotta do what they say. So, I can, I can envision something else being put there, you know, after the fact that, that wouldn't meet, because you have to go back and every, your site plan has to address all of that. There are already safeguards built into your comprehensive plan and your process to address all these things. And it just really comes down to, you know, if you, if you really want to see that there, again, I'm really willing to take the risk. If it really bothers you, you should vote no. That's what I would do. But again, for someone to, to, to build it, it's a journey. And the first step is to have the vision. I have the vision and I'm willing to take the risk. And again, uh, no one's gonna go there and spend millions. That's what it's gonna cost, uh, in building a hand grenade factory.
Any other questions? Someone? Motion?
Ma'am Chair.
Yes, sir.
Would it be inappropriate that I recommend we defer this until the applicant can give us a little more information, more discrete, site plan layout to demonstrate a balanced proposal on this site? It doesn't need to be detailed, but it should be fully representative of what can fit on that piece of property and how the retail can screen the, the mini storage area. And be more, more comprehensive on what setbacks have to be installed, things of that nature. I wonder if that would be of any use to the commissioners on this consideration.
Is that a motion? Can I second that motion?
That was a motion. Okay.
Was that a motion?
I'm sorry, I got one more question.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I need to ask Bren- Brendan for his opinion on that also.
Yeah, I was gonna say the same.
Why do we have three possible, four food lines?
Say that again?
Why do we have three food lines here?
Oh, I can't answer that, John. We, I can't answer that. We can't tell which companies can and cannot come in.
No, no, I'm asking, why are, here, I'm not, I'm not...
Oh, I'm like, I don't know.
You must hear why companies, the Tractor Supply down the street from me, did they come, did, did one of our people here say, "We need a Tractor Supply"? No, they said, oh, I'm sorry. They said, "I think that'd be a good place for Tractor Supply." Uh, Taco Bell, the dentist office, um, they made the initiative.
Right.
Okay? That, that's what happens, okay? Um, if, if Publix or Wegmans or something like that saw the houses, saw the amount of business we do and thought it was a really good idea, Food Line'd be out of business tomorrow. Okay? Not necessarily, but they would see a, a very big... So, what, what, what do you see in, in that, that grocery war? That it is, there is no war in, in this county, but... Do other, other, is that what happens? They come in and scout the area, or is that something that we need to go out and?
I wish Matt was here. I can't, yeah, I can't address that, John.
Okay, just asking.
Yeah.
You know what? I only have three stores from one chain. You've got two stores from one chain that are gonna maul each other. Think about that. Why would it use that sort of thing? And, and before that, it launched another chain, and when, when, when they left, the, the, I'm not gonna mention any, they went and bought it. Why? Because they didn't want anybody to compete? But right now, you're a captive audience. You, you get what they provide. You have no other choices, right? How, how do you feel about that? They control the market. They're gonna control it as long as you don't let anybody else come in here. What does it take for someone else to come in to pick with them? Well, there's gotta be a relative assurance that they can do something. They won't do it on a building unless they have one that's at least the size of the one across the street. And, and that is driven, you know, talking about these companies that came here? I called Tractor Supply myself for three years in a row, and then, and every month calling, saying, "No, we're not gonna do it. We're not gonna do it." And then they did. So, I mean, a- and they're not gonna tell you, because they're competitive. They compete with each other, right? But if you want to see one, you got to do something. You can't sit back and say, "Well, I, I, I cannot show you a plan and I'm not gonna risk two hundred thousand dollars." This has already happened in New Kent. The Food Line on that road, they spent hundreds of thousands of dollars, got to the point, and it was turned down. They, they made a motion to pass it, and it, the man made a motion, voted against it. So, I mean, I'm gonna tell you, no one, after watching that happen in New Kent, people start to say, "Well, do you, do you know what you want? Do you know what you want?" Because that's what the plan calls for. And then you got a warm body in front of you proposing to do it, and you gonna wait for what? You want, you want somebody, are you putting two hundred thousand dollars in? I'm telling you, it's a leap of faith. And, and I don't understand how anyone would do it at this point, based on what's planned by. That, that it will come, but you've gotta take the step to make it possible. There's gotta be some relative possibility for it to work. And that would start with exactly what's happening here tonight.
And you think you can do it in five years, Mr. Daniel?
Yes, yes. I didn't happen before that. I mean, I'm not fortunate enough, because again, who knows? I, I, if I had to predict what's gonna happen, right about November, everything's gonna change economically. And when the election's over, all that money's gonna drive, and the money drives up all the unemployment. See what I'm saying? It's all driven by the market. But, um, again, it takes someone with, takes a warm body with a, an idea and some, with some backbone and to, willing to take a risk, and I'm here. So, but if you, if you say, "You got to show me this and that," where is that person at? He'd be here in front of me. That's beautiful stuff. I don't want to build it, but it's gonna take you, it's gonna take your assistance. You can say no. You, you should say no if you're gonna defer it, because, again, I have a timed contract. I must, I have to perform by September. It's gotta go from you to the, um, board supervisor.
Yeah, even if we say no, it goes to the board supervisors. Correct? I mean, that's the way it works.
I would like to go with your blessings and your best thoughts. I don't want you to do anything that you have any, if you think it's wrong, you should vote no for it.
Right.
Because it's, it's a long way between here and the finish line, and I'm willing to try if you're willing to try.
Well, I have no doubt that New Kent is ready for a, a different grocery store. Just saying. Oh. Sorry.
So, just again, I want to remind everyone of our role here as, as to what we are supposed to be doing here. So, it's a question of, is this property suitable? And does it meet the requirements? Does it have an envision of what will come? My concern is the mini storage, but we will have a buffer between the mini storage. So, even if he does not develop the front, the mini storage would still be hidden to the back. And that would be how many feet between the retail and the, um, mini storage? How, fifty feet?
I don't know.
So, would it be a dense require, would it be a dense, if it's a lesser footage, would it be a denser requirement?
Say that again?
In other words, if you said it was fifty feet, but then they come back and say it's twenty-five feet, well, I can give you a, do a more denser landscape with certain trees that you wouldn't see the development.
There's no buffer requirement specifically between the retail and the mini storage. Are you talking about landscaping? Because the zoning is the same.
Yeah, that's... Go ahead.
Yeah, there, there, that would be my concern. There is no real buffer that is mandated, because it's all one zone property. But, um, you know, the, uh, the one thing I would suggest, if we do go yes, I would, I would have a scale model of how you're gonna fit this, these properties, these buildings on this, because the supervisor will not, will not go with what we may go with. Okay? Because I don't see how they fit with, with it out, without it being cluttered. A major anchor and a, an anchor store, and then a major store, and then everything in between. I, I, I look at that area every day when I leave the property, I leave the picture landing. I, I can't see that, but it, it could be possible. I just, I just can't see it, but...
Site plan review process is rigorous. You're just gonna walk up in there and say, "Hey, sound off, you got a good, believe me, that gonna go, it's very detailed."
Well, I'm, I'm sure, but I'm sure Timmons would be able to give you...
Uh, one of the things we had said was, um, use trips per day. And I had one engineer in front of me, a preliminary one, it cost a little bit of money, I've already spent. Mini storage is the lowest, best, the lowest one, and that's trip per day, least for any other use that I can find. Besides the hand grenade factory, I mean, but all that stuff has got to be done. You're right. You can make a profit, but it already is one. You have to...
You have to be good, uh, terms and conditions, except for in your given plan today, for problems like that, you gotta do it, parking, buffering, and all that.
So, you're saying that if we keep number eight in there, though, you can't do it?
Pretty much making it possible to do it, if someone else would send in dollars, but I don't think that's the way it would call it.
But we could keep number eight in there, and the board could make a different decision, correct?
Yeah.
I would say forward it with all of the conditions, and then the board would make that final say.
I think that sounds like a motion. Sure?
Go, Laura, did you have another question?
Um, before you make the motion, uh, I think we should put something in there in condition ten to designate which certificate of occupancy we're talking of. Or is it just, we get to the fir- the first one?
The board could do that too.
And it stops at that?
The board could do that also.
Okay, all right.
Patty, did you wanna make a motion?
How was she gonna write this? Number ten?
Laura?
Uh, you're talking about the expiration date, right?
Yes.
Well, yeah, I'm talking about seeing whether there's some type of clarifier, clarifier that we can put in, designating which certificate of occupancy they're talking about.
Which is kinda covered in...
Use your mics, yep.
It's covered in number eight, if eight is a condition, then it would be the retail.
Yeah, yeah, the, yeah, okay.
Right? Okay. And is number five changed to fifty thousand square feet?
Yeah.
No, that's, that refers to the mini storage portion in the back.
Oh, okay.
The fifty thousand square foot was the retail part.
Gotcha, gotcha.
Ms. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
I take his thing up, my ears are hurting. In order to address and protect and promote the public convenience, necessity, general welfare, and the good zoning practices in county, I move to adopt the resolution number PC dash zero four dash two zero, forward the application CUP oh one dash two oh to the New Kent County Board of Supervisors with a favorable recommendation.
With the conditions?
With the conditions that the planning department has submitted.
Okay. Sherry, can you poll the members?
Yes, to forward CUP dash oh one two zero, Pocahontas Center Retail Mini Storage, um, with a favorable recommendation to the board of supervisors with listed conditions, House Sayuma Schmidt. Dr. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Nay, I just think you're too early.
Ms. Thomas?
Nay.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Ms. Rose?
Aye.
Mr. LaRochelle?
Nay.
Mr. Tiller?
Abstain.
Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
Ms. Townsend?
Aye.
Ms. Butler?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
All right, Ms. Chairman, the, the, uh, the vote is one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, two, three. So, the motion carries with a majority vote.
Thank you, Sharon. Would anybody mind if we took a five-minute break?
You're the chairperson.
Five-minute recess?
Five-minute break.